Good evening. I'm calling to order the school committee meeting of April 8, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Now the meeting is called to order. Is anybody with audio or videotape in the meeting? Seeing and hearing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, for good luck, I start to my left.
Jake Brady through.
Bill Fonseca.
Sarah Trullio.
Krieger Thompson.
Rich Fuchero.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Marcin Boucher.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Assistant Director for Business.
Kathy Solari, Department of Defense.
Thank you for that. Let's move to item number two, approval of minutes. 2.1, approval of the March 25, 2019 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the March 25, 2019 regular session meeting minutes.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second?
Any discussion, please? Kathy, wonderful job in getting everything down.
Thank you.
You are amazing. Seeing and hearing no further discussion, if I was in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Are you unanimous, Ms. Solari? 2.2, approval of the March 29, 2019 minutes with the MSBA. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the March 29, 2019 minutes with the MSBA.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a couple of edits that I've already given to Kathy that I did mention to you, Rich.
Okay. Anything else? If I was in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Are you unanimous again?
I'll abstain.
Abstain, one abstention, 401.
You missed a good meeting.
I know.
For a good meeting.
That's right.
Committee and subcommittee communications. Take it away, Mr. Brady.
Thank you. So, senior banquet was Friday night at the Delaney House in Polio. And it was a great night for seniors as we celebrated the closing of our time at East Long Meadow High School with dancing, great food, and unity as the class of 2019. And then during the banquet, the East Long Meadow High School yearbook staff continued their annual tradition of honoring a member of the East Long Meadow High School staff as they dedicated this year's yearbook to Ms. Patricia Hafee.
Oh, nice.
Ms. Hafee graduated from East Long Meadow High School in 1974 and has since made an impact to the East Long Meadow public school system on every level. Ms. Hafee always treats her students with her knowledge of healthy eating and staying active. And personally, I took her class as a freshman at the high school, and it was such a privilege. She truly cares about our students. And I would like to formally thank Ms. Hafee for the profound impact she has made on my life and many other students' lives. And I wish her all the best in her retirement.
Oh, well said, Mr. Brady.
Very nice.
Well, you're really coming along well there, man. You're ready to be chair, aren't you? And thank you, Mr. Brady. Mr. Fonseca.
Okay, last week I attended the National School Board Conference in Philadelphia. It was another good conference. They do a good job of really focusing in on the issues. A lot of this year's themes were around educating the whole child, which we do very well here in East Long Meadow, and it's been on our radar for a number of years. One of their other initiatives this year is to try and put pressure on Congress to fund IDEA at the 40% that's required by law instead of the average of 16% that it's being funded at annually. I also took part in the immigration program over at Burtland last week, and that was a great program. The students did a great job in that. Some very interesting questions. And one last item is last Wednesday night, the Burtland Corps sang the national anthem at the Thunderbirds game. And we were season ticket holders this year, went to a lot of games. And I'll tell you right now, Burtland did one of the best jobs all year. It was a great, great night. And Tim, if you could pass that along, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, it's great, yeah, I certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trullio.
I was able to participate in the mystery reader program at Meadowbrook Elementary School. So I wanted to thank Room 27. I received some wonderful thank you notes. And they were absolutely adorable and were very attentive and asked a lot of great questions during our time together. I also enjoyed being a part of the conversations around the high school. So I'm sure as many of the committee members, we appreciated the time with the folks from the MSBA and the State Treasure and then also the follow-up with the families last week. And additionally, I just wanted to reach out and say thank you to a lot of the families who have spoken up over the past couple of weeks and have followed up with me personally regarding either the high school, our visit with the MSBA, the surveys regarding athletics, and even the alternative ways of honoring some academic achievements. So I really want to appreciate that our families are continuing to reach out and follow up and that they're really participating, whether they're here or not, by using the LCAT 01028 and just reaching out to make sure that they have the right information as they ask questions. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. I have nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Marcin Boucher.
Do I have stuff? First of all, kudos to the immigration. That was pretty amazing. I'm really looking forward to the Passion Project.
Oh, yeah.
Because, yeah, I can only imagine. What I really want to say is, all right, last May, 2018, we made a change with ranking our students. Prior to that vote, we made a very direct request, polite, kind, fair request, to Dr. Flanagan to speak with students, to reach out to others in the school, and to come up with a new way to honor our students. Instead of receiving a well-thought-out constructive ideas that we can mull through, we were basically given their opinions. We didn't ask for opinions. We asked for what can we do to change this so that we can continue to honor those students? At that meeting, we talked at length about our students that are in great need. We also spoke about our student athletes at length. But as soon as we get to the point of speaking about our students that are excelling, our students scholars, everybody gets all jittery because nobody wants to say, "A kid's super smart." And I think that's really sad because ultimately, we as a board are here and this entire education system is here to educate a student. The music is secondary. The athletics are secondary. All the other extracurriculars are secondary. They're important. We need those to create solid, functioning, wonderful human beings. But our job is to educate first. So we asked for ideas. We asked for suggestions. What we got was an opinion. And that isn't what we asked for. Our job is to make sure we get what we ask for. And I had requested a couple of times, and I'm not picking on you because, you know, I have high regard for you. I had asked Mr. Smith a couple of times, "How's it going? How's it going? How's it going?" And he kept hitting walls, and I kept hitting walls. And that isn't how that this board is supposed to run. When we ask for something to be done, and it isn't often, it needs to be done, and it needs to be done properly. Because what happened here at our last meeting was an abomination. And I think we were all at different spots, and I don't, we want to honor what the teachers, the professionals are saying, and the educators, but we also know what's important for our kids and our town. And we need to honor those kids. And I'm not talking a trophy out to everybody. We need to honor those kids. So I'm moving forward. Our expectations on this board, as always should be, when we have made a request, and we don't make a lot, it needs to be done properly. We need to respect the students who are at that high level as we should respect all students. But not respecting them is not fair. And I hope that it comes in front of this board again. There was, it was not necessary, and it was not my place to have to make a motion to create a new designation because we had asked the professionals to do it. So in the future, I hope that those professionals do their job so we can move forward. I hope to see it come before this board again. I don't know if it will or won't. Maybe students can speak out in front of it, and then maybe we can make an informed decision. But never again, and I'm on this board until the 30th of June, do I ever want to see that happen while I'm on it or in the future. Because I'm going to be one of those parents coming up and sitting down with a chair yapping at you. So that's all I have to say for today. Thank you.
And I'll just follow with a couple of things. I think that we've heard quite a bit from everybody. I do want to compliment the school system. There's just a lot of really positive activities going on for the immigration, which we talked about. And Beth, you mentioned the Passion.
That's cool.
Projects coming up in June. We've had the Senior Projects. I think that Meadowbrook's having a STEAM conference in a couple of weeks, I think. I mean, it just seems that the whole school system is doing a lot of very positive, productive things. On that high note, I saw our team win. The press team.
Oh, wow. The streak is broken.
Yes, I feel really a bit above that. I do think at some point, who's the school committee to sit down with our superintendent? A lot of different feedback on that forum we had on Thursday. What I'm feeling is a void in that we've had this major undertaking spearheaded by Dr., by Mr. Smith, the SOI, revisions, the additions, deletions. We had the big visit for the MSBA. We had the forum. And now we wait till December. So some parents are asking, is there something more we can do? So I think who's at some point to sit down and talk about, can we keep the momentum moving? Maybe just maybe one or two more activities this year and something next year. Because December's a long way off. That's when we'll hear in December, right?
December, right.
December. So I'm recommending maybe something in May, maybe something in the fall of next year.
Well, definitely. You can probably let the summer, you know, people go on vacation, they kind of lose focus. But if we did something, I agree with the timeline. If we do something in May and then fire it up again in September, that might work.
Just a thought. So I think we should probably be, maybe next meeting, put that time point on the agenda. Don't have to surround robin about it.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much. Opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing and hearing none. Presentations. We are moving down to 5.1.1. Burtland Park, proposals, standards-based grading for math. And we're looking at the 2019, 2020 school year, which is actually next year. Am I correct, Dr. Allen?
Yes.
So if you can bring up your team, please.
Come on, team. So thanks for having us. I'll try to link up on today. How do you do that?
Should go.
Is it curriculum?
COF.
COF.
I'd be more impressed if you used the flip shot.
It's coming. I know, it's coming. It's there for me.
So you got you on local.
It's there for me. We'll get to it.
I'm looking for it.
Going to go right behind Kathy. It's saying no signal.
Not going either.
Might need the flip chair.
We have it, but.
Yeah, we've got it.
The audience will need it.
Should, you're on Apple TV. You can go to the main one if you want to hook in hardwire.
What's the main one?
This one. Then you just go to one.
You plug in.
Door, roll the cords.
Well, for wireless, this is fine.
That's the alternative method. Yeah.
What are we doing now?
He's going to hook it.
Backup plan.
The tough part will be that you're only, you're only going to see it here.
It's okay. We, I have it. As long as the audience can see it, I think it's important. And you can get that to Mr. Mackey, right? What's happening?
Where are you?
Oh, you're on two. It's good. What happened to my computer? Oh. We didn't log into your computer.
And we didn't log out either. Why is it? It's over here.
Yeah.
So they must be late, and we must not be able to get it there.
Okay.
You have two TVs working.
Oh, I got it here.
Heather, do you know how I would get it so it's not a quarter of the screen?
Because you have to, your display settings are not for an HDMI display. I don't know how to do that on, what is it? Chromebook?
No, it's, it's a Chrome.
Or is it an Apple?
No, it's an Apple.
Okay, I don't know how to do it.
It'll be really good when I start, I promise.
And I don't know what optimize for low tonium means, but.
Doing the display settings? He's doing under pressure too.
Nothing's labeled well on computers.
Not anymore.
I say go two-thirds.
That's what you're trying to say, Jay.
Yeah, I'll go two-thirds. Okay. So, thanks for having us. I have Charlene LaChapelle with me, our math coach. I don't know if you all know her, but she's the middle school math coach, and she's having a much larger impact than just middle school as well. So Charlene and I and our math department chair, Wendy Lee, who could not be here tonight, we've been working/leading together some pretty exciting work in our math department the last few months. What you're seeing today is sort of a smorgasbord of a couple of different presentations and a couple steps in the thinking that started in December and have led us here in April to presenting this to you. So hopefully this story sort of tells itself when I'm done. But some of this, if you just looked at it on your own, might have seemed like, why is he telling us that? But I think it all goes together when I start to give the narrative. So I told my math department in December that I was very proud because there's two things that I believe to be completely true. And not every principal can say this, right? But I truly believe that all of our core math teachers, so that's our, there are seven of them, are intrinsically motivated, and intrinsically being the key word, to deliver high-level curriculum and instruction and to continually improve. Okay? And again, not a lot of principals can say even number one. Like, it doesn't matter if I'm walking into a math class or not. My math teachers want to do their best, and that is a real privilege. Doesn't mean we're all the best teachers of all time. It just means we're all trying to be. And I'm happy with that. And number two, as this board knows well, our tiered math program is strong, and it's continually improving and individualizing. So Ms. Mantuleski was the teacher for the first three years of its existence. She did a great job. Now my department chair, Ms. Lee, is in that role, and she's taken it even to new levels of individualization and skill targeting. She's really working on engagement in that classroom and making sure kids are into what they're doing, making it fun as well. So we truly, I truly believe both of those things, which it's a privilege to say as a principal. But I also believe that in order to significantly impact students' math achievement on a larger scale, we still need to find other things to do and continually innovate. The math beast is real. It's only getting harder. They're only making it harder. And the world is demanding higher and higher math skills and reasoning skills. So even though I'm proud of those two things, I was letting my math department know in December, we still got to be trying some new stuff. We got to be doing some new things here to stay ahead of it. So for example, we're looking at STAR. We're looking at iReady. We're starting to pilot iReady and start to see new ways to do that. Okay? So that's one thing. We also implemented a new tutoring program where I have my math teachers, one or two days a week tutoring a group of 10, eight or 10 students that need extra help for 25 minutes, right? So it was just a new creative scheduling way to get them some face time with, not their kids that are in tiered math, right? But their kids that aren't in tiered math but aren't going to be great at math in 50 minutes a day, right?
Dr. Allen, you may want to explain just the tutorial concept.
Yeah, we have tutorials.
Middle school schedule.
We have, every day, we have our six academic blocks, and then we have a 30-minute other. So on Mondays and Thursdays, that's advisory. And on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, that's tutorial. So if you remember, when I arrived, we had a 53-minute tutorial every day and a half-hour advisory. But you remember, my first year, we wanted to lengthen classes. So we took that 83 minutes and put it to 30 minutes and still tried to hold everything up. So that's where we found some time to, with some creative coverage schedules and stuff like that, to have math teachers get some more time. Now, that's not going to solve everything, but it was at least a good way for teachers to get maybe a total of five more hours face-to-face with a small group before MCAS. And also a good thing just as a school to see we can get more and more creative with tutorial if we want to individualize for kids. So that was another thing that came out of this presentation. But the third thing, and I knew the big whammy for teachers would be, I said, huh, what about standards-based grading in just math? What do we think about that? So that started in December and has led to this. So standards-based grading, I'm not going to go through these slides. You've seen them. Just a lot of quotes from important books that talk about how standards-based grading can really improve teaching and learning. It can focus us in on the standards. It can motivate kids to know what skills they want to get better at. It can motivate, not motivate, but it can more clearly communicate with parents what kids are struggling in or what kids are excelling in. And you're going to hear some stories about that as I go here. And it can actually do a good job of helping teachers zone in on what's most important, okay? And blocking out some of the like noise around math and honing in on the math. So these are just quotes, you know, of course, I'm sure there's books that say the opposite. But the ones that we went, I looked into at first, standards-based grading has been shown to significantly boost achievement and motivation for students. Now, obviously, that's if it's done well, right? It's only if it's done well. So that was the key, was trying to do this well. I talked that it would be hard at first to cope with losing our normal way of grading, especially for middle school teachers, right? Where like, we have to kind of act like elementary teachers in the level of care we have to provide, especially for students' emotional side. But we also think like math teachers at the high school where we're sort of like, this is our content, you know, like, don't water us down. So I knew and I acknowledged to our teachers that that would be hard at first. But I also would say it could help focus all of us, most importantly, students, on specific standards. And also, even at the middle school level, most people that do it end up thinking it's an easier way to grade in the long run. So it's a hard transition. But then our literacy coach, Steve Pearson, he graded, he was in Springfield, and he graded standards-based. And then he came here and had to go back to percentages. And he had a really hard time with that because he was so used to like, no, I want to tell them they can't write a thesis. I don't want to tell them they have an 81, right? So once you get into it, it can really work. For example, in math, of course, organization is really important. It's a really important student skill. It's a really important life skill. But right now, in a lot of math classrooms, like how you organize your math notebook is a big part of your grade. It's not really a math skill. It's organization. It's not a math skill. So standards-based grading in math could sort of cut out, again, trim some of that fat off the grades and hone us in on what's most important. And then you really focus on assessments, but not assessments in the like, bleh, like overwhelmingly long tests. Like, these are short, and I'm going to show you. That's why I got my paper over there, Mr. Fonseca. So obviously, this would also be a huge transition for families if we're okay to do it. Not as huge for sixth grade because elementary does it a little differently than you'll see I'm proposing, but they do standards-based grading, as we all know. But for the other families that have gotten used to the letter grades, it would be going back to this.
So pause here for a minute. So we can pretty much conclude that all the students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, if they've been in our system since pre-Kindergarten, have experienced standards-based grading.
Yes.
Maybe they haven't had it.
Through fifth grade, yeah. Yeah, it's one of the things I'll frankly run into with some parents if we're able to do this is it's sort of a rite of passage to get to the middle school and go get your A, right? So like, that will be different. Now, I'm only proposing it, we're only proposing it in one content area. But that, they'll be used to standards-based grading, but they might have been at the point where they were ready for it not to exist or they were ready for it to keep existing. Who knows? Family to family. All right. So a couple of big ideas that I talked about. Grades should always inform the student, the teacher, and the parents, all right, about how to enhance learning. So you're going to be hearing from me throughout this that I would argue an 82 does not inform the parent or the student how to enhance learning. And often, not even the teacher. It just tells you, I put all these percentages in there and I came out with a score, okay? Also, no single assessment should ever be relied upon as an absolute reflection of student learning. So that's important because even though this is going to look at assessments to tell us if a kid has mastered a standard, it's got to look at multiple. It can't just be this one big moment, all right, on unit rate, right? There's got to be a lot of moments on unit rate to decide. And this was another thing that drove us there. I had our first-ever parent conference this year with a parent and me and the math teacher and the tiered math teacher, okay? And the parent, rightfully so, was saying, "I need to know more. My kids, I'm getting tutoring. I want my kid to be good at math. I need to know more about what I should get tutoring on, okay? Because the 81, like I said, I keep using 81, but like, it doesn't tell me much." And number two, I know, I believe you. I believe that she needs tiered. I trust that you triangulate data, look at things, and make this decision. But she's got an A minus in math. How are you telling me she has an A minus in math and then she needs tiered math, right? Or he needs tiered math? I can't remember. And we had a good meeting, but like, the parent was right. Like, yeah, she's getting, he or she was getting an A minus in math because they turn everything in, they stay after school, they do everything they can to get every point they can get. Doesn't mean they're getting 100 average because they've mastered everything. But it does mean if they're a 75, 80% like math skill set, they can get that other 10 points to get to that A minus by doing everything they should, right? So I couldn't really reconcile that for the parent. And it's the same thing with MCAS. If you've had a middle school kid come home with, hey, they got four As in math last year, but then they come home with their MCAS score and they're partially meets, right? And that happens all the time. And it's not a bad thing. It's just an archaic grading system in that content area, is my argument, that leads to that actually happening. All right. So went through, I, I'll say real quick, I presented this to the department. Then we met, Charlene and I met with each counterpart set. So we met with like the two eighth-grade teachers, the two seventh and the two sixth. And I said, "Just give me feedback, and I'm just typing what you say." Because I needed to meet with them in small groups to get their honest opinions. Because if I just asked the department, there might be people that don't want to speak up in front of the department. So we made this document. We shared it on Google. We had everybody's feedback, and Tim kept his mouth shut, which was hard. But he just typed, and he had the feedback. And by the end, it was pretty clear that we had 80 to 90% that were like on board with this. Like, we're in. And even the one, really the one, one and a half that were like a little, it wasn't like I'm not in. It was just like, man, Tim, it's December. You're talking about for September? And I was like, yeah, I am. Because I think if we do this, we can do it well but fast. So it wasn't even like a no way, this is an awful idea. It was just kind of like, I'm in, but I'm trepid. I'm a little nervous. So anyway, so then we outlined how this would work. What is the process for going to standards-based grading? How do we grade? That's the current work. The culmination of it is bringing it to you today, okay? The second step is how do we assess? That's the big work. This is the work that comes up now. How do they assess students versus the standards? Can we find a program that helps? Does Master Connect the right program? Does Google Classroom have the right program? Do we end up with some sort of curriculum that has assessments built in? iReady allows us to generate two assessments per standard for kids, but only two, right? So that, that might be a tool, might not. And then the third thing is how do we teach it? And that would be over the next couple of years. Where my math department is in the curriculum renewal process, if it still keeps going the way it is, next year, I believe. So that's good timing if we still can do that. Because we would have this new way of scoring, we'd have this new way of assessing, and now we'd get some new resources to help us teach it. So good. All right. So by January, my, you can't lead anything. You can't lead anything if not a step ahead. By January, my department was catching up and passing me on the like track towards standards-based. So Ms. Brown shared this book with me, and I read it in a day or two to catch back up. And this is one of the bigger books on standards-based grading. And I'm sure a lot of you have heard of Marzano. He's just kind of leads this kind of stuff. Um, and this book was phenomenal, so I put it in here because this really got me in thinking new ways about this, it pushed my thinking a ton. We gave a copy to all of my department, we did a little reading together. Um, and we did some work that really came out of this book to take next steps. Um, one thing that this book points out that I really did want to acknowledge is they say there's two things. There's standards based grading and there's standards reference grading. Standards based grading, if you're actually doing that the way Marzano defines it. Is a student does not move to the next level of learning until they have demonstrated competence at the current level, okay? Standards reference grading is you report their status relative to the performance standards. Of the knowledge of the skill, but they still can move on if they haven't mastered it. So I'm gonna keep saying standards based, but in with all transparency, what we're really doing is standards reference. Cause we're not having a kid stay at unit rate for ten months in seventh grade. Because they haven't mastered it and you really couldn't do that in classes, you know.
It'd happen forever.
You have forever and it just, just wouldn't work without it really individualized system. So I'm still saying standards based grading because it's the accepted nomenclature, but uh, it was interesting to see that's not really what, okay? This I probably didn't need to include, but I'm gonna include it anyways. Um, we started talking as a department that there's all sorts of classroom assessments. Obtrusive, that's what you think of, like stop learning, take an assessment. Be it a DBA, be it a three day MCAS, or be it a five question quiz. Obtrusive means we abtruded on the learning and we assessed. Unobtrusive is something we can get a lot better at and maybe the system will help us, which is kids are working in groups. And they're doing the work they're supposed to be doing and the teacher walks around and says, oh, Charlene's really got it. She's really understanding unit rate, I can tell. And I might like have a little chart with me and I put it in there like she is on target with this one. And then I might get to Kathy and woo, she's not, she's struggling, we need Kathy need a little help, so we, you know. So that would be, I haven't interrupted the learning and then student generated is the one I want to get to. And student generated is where kids start to demonstrate on their own and create their own things to show they have it. So going back to unit rate again, why not say to a kid, oh, you think you know unit rate better than you showed, you showed on that last assessment? Do something this weekend that you can bring to me that shows your understanding of unit rate, right? And that's the type of math students we wanna build that can like, you know, I could, I could be a kid and just do fantasy basketball. And constantly be using that to student generate my ability to perform some standards. Now, you can't just do that, of course, but I'm saying we're not just talking about obtrusive assessments that stop the learning. There's also these other ways to get standards based grading done. Uh, and especially with student generated, you can get very individualized. And you can really build kids intrinsic motivation and their application ability to things in their lives. And then with the, the uses, you know, performative scores, for summative scores, so formative are the along the way, summative would be kind of the report card or the big test. And then instructional feedback, that's another reason to do all this is like to know what to do next as a teacher. So I might do some sort of formative assessment, not to then score you on it, but to score me and to know what I need to do next. So just sort of, this was important, I felt for the department to start to see this sort of like quilt of what's happening in the classroom with all these different patches. And not just teach quiz, teach quiz, teach quiz. Um, so then we talked about the scales, so there's a lot of different scales. I, I actually forget offhand which one the elementary schools use, but they use letters, right? Um, so some schools that do this use advanced, proficient, basic, below basics. And obviously the simplest thing would be to mi- mirror the MCAS exceeding, meeting PM for partially meeting and NM for not meeting. Um, but then this book again, which helped us get a much deeper understanding. Um, proposed in numbers, um, and this is the, this is the simplistic view of it, which is a four. So start with three, for the standard, three is the goal. That means the kid is mastering that standard at the grade level. They're doing what they should be able to do at the appropriate rigor level for this grade level, alright? A two is, yeah, they can do it a little bit, but it's gotta be a little simpler than it, than it would be perhaps on the MCAS kind of thing. A one is they, they got it a little bit, but they're still working towards independence, you kinda gotta step by step them to get there, right? A zero is even with no, even with help, no success. And then a four is I'm not just mastering at the grade level, I'm applying it beyond the grade level, okay? Um, so with my department, I, I showed all these different ways. And I should say we pulled a bunch of standards based middle school report cards from all over. Um, there's especially a middle school in Oregon, 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 who does it the best.
Washington State.
Started Washington State.
It's in Redden, Washington.
Are you going there next week?
I am.
So she's going to.
I've already set up a meeting to meet with a math coach there. Um, just so happens my daughter lives out there and knows somebody, so I had some connections. So I am going to be meeting with the principal and a math coach out there in Redden, just to get some information.
It's a business trip now.
That school of all the schools to visit, it's random that she has a location near there because they have like an eighty page. They went standards based for the whole school, for everything. And they have like an eighty page thing that really helped drive our thinking too, just about why they did it, how they did it. Who did it, you know, it really is like a manual for doing this, including uh, research articles on why they did it, blah, blah, blah. Um, so it's cool that she's going there and it's, it's obviously cool that our department is doing this thinking. So Marzano presents this and then presents this, um, which we've changed the wording a little bit here. Um, but this is the same scale, but with half points. So if you just look at three point five, it's like in addition to three point O, I'm, I'm showing some success at four point O. So in addition to two point O, I'm showing some success at three point O. I showed these two to the department and asked them which one, once they wanted numbers, I asked them which one they would want. I said, there's another one that does one third points. And I said, to be honest, I'm not showing you because we're not, we're not doing one, we're not doing three point six sevens. Um, and there was some thinking that this would just be a little simpler and more straightforward. But the majority clearly landed here and said, it's, it can't be too simple because there are gonna be kids that are three point five. They're always mastering the grade level and they're doing some above work, but they're not quite always above. So this is where we landed in our proposal as a department. Um, and you'll see this when you look at the report cards in a minute. Alright, so biggest things I learned after reading, which I'll demonstrate in a minute. Um, this book was very clear on consistent and recent. Um, so you look at the most consistent grades on a standard and then you, but then you heavily weigh the recent ones. So it's a real balance, it is some subjective, um, gray, which I'll explain in a minute. But that was just, that stuck out, that that, those two words need to be at the forefront of grading this way correctly. Um, this book also has a chapter called the need for a new scale. And it pretty much just destroys the one hundred point scale, it just says it's not telling us anything about teaching and learning and here's why not. Um, and then I learned that this is really, and this is where I was, I did not understand it at all when we started this process. Um, how we create this, the assessments is really the key. Um, so this is one of the things that uh, I wanted to show you and I think it's easier if you have a visual.
Could you put it on that side?
Sure, yeah. Jake, you mind, I'll be right behind you. No worries, you're good there. So this was the biggest learning that took place for me as I was doing this. Um, so I'm gonna talk in terms of a five question quiz, so let's say we're taking a five question quiz on unit rate, okay? In my head, when I started this, if you get a hundred, you're a four. If you get four out of five, you're a three, you know, if you get two or three out of five, you're a two. And that's what I was thinking and that was completely wrong if you do this right. So the five question quiz, let's put the, let's put this back up. Um, the five question quiz on the standard according to Marzano should actually do this. We should ask two questions at the two point O level. So now the teachers actually have to write, okay, we've been, let's, let's, let's do Pythagorean theorem, it's easier. The, the teachers have to write, okay, let's write two simple Pythagorean theorem questions, okay? And then the teachers have to write two three point O questions. So now we've asked the targeted grade level Pythagorean theorem questions. And then they have to write a question that is past grade level, that goes deeper or applies more. So now when I take the five question quiz, I'm asking, I've, 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 I got two, two questions, two three point questions and a four point question. So now you can just imagine like if a kid gets just those two right, well, clearly that kid's a two point O at this point on this standard, right? If a kid gets like these, then they're probably a two point five, they, they mastered two, they got some threes, right? If they do this, that would be a three point O kid, they've mastered the three point O. They do the whole thing, it'd be a four, that kind of thing. So that really changed it for me because that shows you the real value. Because number one, the conversation the teachers have to have to create this assessment and come up with different levels of questions in math for the same standard. That just, that conversation alone will change everything, that'll just change everything. Number two, once you get good at this, kids know, hey, I got, I know I got the twos, did I get the threes? Did I get that four, that four, that one was tough, right? Um, and so that's how the assessment would actually work. Um, is you have to have questions at the different levels to see how high they can get in their mastery.
They progressive back them in general or not necessarily, could be.
That, I'm simplifying it like totally.
Could be three, two, two, four, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and we'd have to sort of grow into how these are built. Uh, and I want my teachers to grow in, I know if I was still teaching math, I would, I would do a ton of five question quizzes just like that. But it's not, there's no like, they, they're gonna build them together, Charlene will be at the table, I'm sure.
And these conversations have already started, we've had a lot of deep discussion already about what would be the difference between a three? What would make it a four, what would they actually have to be able to do to make it four?
Which is time so much better spent than reading every math notebook. And being like, they, they got a nine out of ten on their math notebook, right? Like the deep dive into what is a four point O, a, a, a scale, um, I think is so important. Um, alright, so then how do we land at a summative score? So averaging scores, this was important for me to learn too, like. Averaging scores only makes sense if no learning has occurred from assessment to assessment. So what I mean by that is like, let's say Rich was teaching me how to build a house. And he taught me for a week and I built my first house. Chances are that house would not be very good, it'd probably be a pretty bad house. But then he taught me two more weeks after that, I built another one, then he taught me another week, I built another one, alright? So now by that third house, I've built a really good house because Rich has, you've taught me so much, right? But then if you use the average, you're, you're gonna count my first house as much as you're gonna count my third house. And so much learning has taken place between these houses, right? So that's why it's consistent and recent, that recent score should, should matter more. Because we all get better the more we do something, right? So, um, that's another thing against the way we do it, which is like every test I take is twenty percent. Even though when I take that third test, I've been taught three times as much and three times as many, uh, three times as many minutes on learning kind of thing. So the example I put here is like, if you're, if you picture the sta- a standards, uh, based, um, grade book like in Reddick. This will be the other thing my teachers will have to do and they'll have to do it together a lot of the time. But let's say the standard is Pythagorean theorem, alright? And then instead of it saying quizzes and you get your sixty-four, seventy-five, it'll say Pythagorean theorem of some sort and I'll use the ones I use. Like they had an assessment, they got a one point O, they had another one, they got a one point five. They got a two, they got a two, they got a three point five. And now they need to give them a score in Pythagorean theorem, so this is the hard part, right? Cause in the old way, we would just average it. And if we averaged it, I think I have that in here, the average would be a two point O, alright? Um, but man, that three point five at the end and, and should that one point O really matter that much? Um, so just using the most recent is kinda where I thought this would go, uh, and again, reading helps. But obviously this kid's probably not a three point five, right? Like that's great that they got that far, but it shouldn't just be like I did great on my fifth assessment and. Um, so thinking in terms of consistent and recent, you know, you would say that, um. Most consistently, this kid sort of got into the two range and hovered there for a while. Recently got a three point five, so the teacher's gonna have to make a call now, is this kid maybe a two point five? Was this test so good that actually that's a really good display of what they are, so they're actually now a three point O? Or maybe you say to the kid, hey, you're, you're right in this ballpark, can you do a student generated something? Can you, can you print some problems off the internet on Pythagorean theorem and do them to prove to me that you're a three point O? Or can you do a little project real quick to prove to me you're a three point O? So that's where the coolness of student generated assessments would come in as well. That's a tough one, alright, like and I explained this to my teachers, like eighty percent of your kids is gonna be pretty clear, it's gonna be consistent and reasonable. Will be a quick decision, this one is a longer one. But again, I would argue it's gonna drive good conversation with the teachers. It's gonna potentially put it back on the kids to do a student generated something or other. Um, and it's just gonna be thinking that's all focused on the standards. Everything I've talked about is thinking that's focused on the standards. Um, so that is the thinking. Um, what we did and what you see now is, um, each grade did a deep dive into their standards. Their state standards, the MCAS assessed standards, the standards they've been teaching, you know, everything they could get their hands on. Um, and each grade, and I gave them autonomy on this, chose, you know, we used to call them priority standards. I think in this work, we, we may have said power more than priorities, so power standards. But they picked their power standards as a grade. Um, and you'll see on the report cards, if you have, do you have them in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we, we landed on two things. So we have the standards and you see quarter one, two, three, four and final, and then you see the scale next to it, okay? And an NA is not assessed this term. Um, being transparent, you like some schools blackout different standards in different terms. We are proposing to not do that in case our pacing gets faster or slower than what we were planning, right? So especially in year one of this, I don't wanna blackout, uh, algebraic expressions in quarter one of grade six and then that group got there, you know? So instead I'm asking my teachers, you'd have to put an NA in the ones that you don't get to in that marking period. Then we also wanted to make sure that we had something about the standards of mathematical practice. Um, and those are hard because those are six big standards, um, and they're important. Um, so you'll see at the bottom there that we landed on that first one under habits of work. Which is make sense of problems and perseveres in solving them. We're not picturing this report card being perfect forever, right? But we, we decided that's the one that matters the most right now. We need to get kids to not stop doing math when math gets hard. Um, and so that's the one we chose for our sort of SMP. And then the ba- the bottom line is the most, um, is the big one, that's the big one. I was on the phone out there while you guys were getting started with a teacher, cause I was like, I just need to know, I'm about to talk about this one. Um, we had a massive debate in the department in our last meeting. As to whether we should be putting anything about homework or work on the report card. In true standards based grading, you don't, you don't. Because it's not about did they do the work, it's about can they do it, can they do the skill, right? Um, but rightfully so, a majority of the department at this point at least. Um, still wants to be able to say, this kid's doing all their work, like they're, they're doing it. Even though they're getting two point O, mom, dad, aunt, uncle, grandma, whatever, just know that they're doing their work. So that's good, but we still need them to get better at it. Or hey, this kid's a four point O, he does everything, he, he knows everything, but he doesn't do anything. Like he's, he's getting ones because he's never doing anything.
To that point, people still need to know that doing the extra work counts for something.
Yeah.
Because you're talking about changing a culture.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, in two or three years, you might come to us and say, hey, look, we don't need this completes assigned work anymore. Because it's not part of the equation because they've gotten so good at it, but we're not there, we're not there yet. So I agree with keeping it there.
Because I think it helps for the parent going, why is my kid just getting a two point five, they're doing, and they know they're doing their stuff. They come home and they get a rarely, you're gonna be like, oh, you weren't about doing that.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
You know, put a little effort in and.
Yep, yeah, so it was really me and primarily one teacher. Who in that meeting were against it, just because I was like, I was Marzano at the table at that point, now I backed off a little bit. And once I saw it here, I was like, oh, that's less, it's less off than I thought. Um, but we, I left it to the department and I said, I would acknowledge that that one was, we were still kind of debating it. I sent them three articles on, one is like why math homework matters, one is like why math homework doesn't matter and one was down the middle. Uh, but anyways, that was, of everything you're looking at, that, that three words was the only thing that was truly controversial.
But it's nice to.
And I can understand why it would be, I could, yeah.
Yeah.
I like it because if you've got a kid that's consistently getting fours, but they're not doing any work. We, maybe that's a way of knowing, we need to give them something that will get them out of.
Well, it works both ways, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Talk to Tal, speaking for the grandparents of the world. So what's your grandson taking in math this year? Is it Algebra I, is it geometry?
Okay, good question, so Algebra I in eighth grade, not standards based. Um, so Algebra I, we are proposing at this time to leave regular scoring. And that's because it mirrors the class at the high school. Um, so they take the same DBA, the same midterms, you know, we just, we just sort of said like in that one. At least for now, just leave as is. So even though on the top here it says sixth grade math report card, seventh grade math report card, if for every other. So right now, all we have is sixth grade math, okay? In seventh grade, we have seventh grade math or we have pre-algebra. So we would still say that at the top, it would say pre-algebra. Pre-algebra would be standards based, because you still teach a ton of the seventh grade math standards in pre-algebra. Um, and then eighth grade would say pre-algebra, because it's pre-algebra.
And then the final is an average of the four quarters?
It would not, good, good question, it, it, the final grade would, would, would follow the same rule, right? So like, let's say we're talking about one that goes across all four. If it's two point O, three point O, three point O, you might be a three point O by the, yeah, it's consistent and recent, so. Uh, what we'll have to figure out, you know, like our DBAs were meant to carry priority standards along. So one of the reasons was like we would teach something in September, October and then never really touch upon it again. And then they would not do well in MCAS, we'd say what happened, because we taught it seven months ago. So ideally, you would see as soon as something gets on here, like it would keep going. But we need to be realistic too, like some of it might get left behind and we can't like give a good score of it for, for a marking period. And then, but that'll, that kind of freedom will also remind us, remind teachers. Like man, I haven't really assessed finding the areas of triangles and special polygons since November. You know, it's time to do something about that, so.
So if I'm a sixth grade parent, I'm gonna get two pieces of paper, this is gonna be stapled to the back of the regular report card.
Yes.
Okay, I know, I tell you, no.
No, I know, I have, yeah, no, no, you're absolutely right, I just haven't, I haven't even played that fully out, like, but.
Some of the ones we looked at online were seven pages long, because everybody had gone standards based, even the specials courses and they were long, long.
This could propel another department to say, you know what, we like that. I'm wondering when that's coming, yeah. Science may wanna do it, English may wanna do it, etc.
But I, I will say, being like an old dinosaur, um. The eighth graders currently had standard based fifth grade. And I looked at it and I. And I looked at it and I was like, you're learning stuff, good. That was the end of it, cause you're not failing anything, your papers look pretty. I'm sending you on your way and I'm not gonna worry about it. You have to talk to the parents about this because, and and like how will it show up on plus portals? Cause I still like my numbers, I like my numbers, you know?
Yeah, that's partly why we went with numbers for the scale at least, it's different numbers, but it's numbers. Yeah, I mean, so we have to meet with Reddicker. My job was to meet with you, Connor's job was to meet with Reddicker, but.
Drew his shirt strap on.
But I mean, it it should look kind of what I just drew there, which is like Pythagorean theorem. There's the formatives I've had and there's my scores. Ratio reasoning to problems involving percent, you know, it'll say that and you'll have scores.
Is there some sub- subjectivity to that?
There is.
To what the scores are or to how they do it?
The final score in that situation.
Yeah, that's that's the point, is like it does land with some subjectivity.
And there would be subjectivity with determining.
What's a three point O, what's a four?
Or what question aligns to a three point O.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant, yes.
That's the work we're starting to look at now.
For sure, but again, all the subjectivity goes back to standards, which is what we're trying to do. Like every conversation lands back at a standard.
So to that point, I'm gonna preface this by saying, I think this is a solid move. Thinking about how how we engage educators in the heart of the matter, which is. Deeply understanding and knowing what the standards are asking our students to know and be able to do. But at the same time, what the standards are asking our teachers to know and be able to do. It's one thing to teach sixth grade math and know what those standards mean, it's another thing to be able to teach. A sixth grader what those standards mean and how our instructional practices need to adjust to not just showcase. What I know about math, but how I can elicit what a child needs to understand about math. So I think the heart of this conversation is in is in the right place. Like we, we need to get teachers diving deeply into standards so that they can better equip students. But I think this is a lot to take on in one year. So I would, I would advocate maybe for a phased approach. So that you're ensuring that maybe if you start with sixth grade. You've got the professional development wrapped around unpacking those standards deeply and I I hear you, you've begun some of that work already. But how do we then ensure that as educators are starting to create these? That they aren't so subjective that then we're potentially doing that to an entire building? But is there a way to kind of phase this in, start with sixth grade, since they will have have the experience coming out of fifth? Work with that every level of teachers, build them up, learn from what experiences they're having, learn from the experiences of the students. And then begin to think about seventh in the next academic year, so that that same cohort is experienced standards based grading. But each year bringing in a different group of teachers.
So you're saying for the sake of the kids or for the sake of the teachers?
I think a little bit of both, because I think if the teachers aren't there with their level of expertise, then we are kind of putting the kids at risk. If we're, if we're asking them to take on, not just changing how they report out. But how they actually get to what they're reporting out. The assessments, which then means they're gonna have to think differently about how they're instructing, so their method methodology, their pedagogy. Which means they're gonna to then need to really dive deeply into the standards, thinking about how, how do you phase that in over time? So that's a really tight loop, because I think, I think this is a great idea. I just worry about how much, how much that would be taking all of that on with one math coach. And a department chair, but it's a lot, it's a lot to balance in terms of the professional development needed. To keep educators abreast.
Yeah, I totally understand, everything's easier phased in for sure. I still, I still would, I still think, I think this is the change lever. And and it, and that's nice to think, I don't know, just knowing the department. I don't know how far we would get in the year we weren't doing it. So even as we're trying to phase it in, what happens to teachers rightfully so is what's in front of me? Hey, don't, don't come at me right now with, in our forty minutes we have together this week about the two point O, three point, that's next year. You know, like, um, so I think. I, I, my personal opinion is that I would rather do this okay year one. And I still think that'll be better teaching and learning than continuing what we're doing with the percentages. Will it be better year two? Absolutely, but it's, uh. And we've already done the work where the teachers aren't rated, like the teachers know it's, it's a potential thing and they're, they've kind of digested it.
Yeah.
And the work will won't increase on individual educator educators, but more educators would be involved. If you rolled it out throughout all the grades.
Yeah, it would be.
Think about monitoring that and providing professional learning experiences for your sixth grade team, your seventh grade team, your eighth grade team. And then at the same time, not doing it already with like Algebra One. So if you're thinking about planning for those cooperative experiences. You, you're really having a plan for, and what I would assume more. Rather than trying to think about, let's get this really tight.
Better to do that.
Well, I totally understand where you're coming from, I just, I just know who I'm talking about and like we have a lot of time, like. On Thursdays, they get fifty minutes with their math coach every week. Our department meetings, since we introduced this have been excellent, cause the department has like a team thing. Like it's kind of united us in some ways, cause we're all working on this for better or worse in times. Um, and then we also have collaboration station on Tuesdays.
And last year, we did a lot of just MathMet on its own and we really started diving more deeply into the standards. Because we were creating tech enhanced DBAs and tech enhanced questions that would kind of mirror image what they'd be expected to be able to do. So last year, we really started doing the deep dive into, let's look at the standards. Are you actually teaching the the standards for your grade? Are you assessing the standards for your grade? So the conversation now, they they feel, I feel and they feel that they're pretty strong about what is a three point O? They can tell you a three point O. The, the, the conversations have been really good about what is a two point O? What is a four point O? And like Pythagorean theorem he was talking about, so we were talking about the standard expects them to be able to find hypotenuse leg. Given certain information. And so we looked and that would be a three point O if they could only find a hypotenuse. But they can't use that equation to find a piece that's missing that's not just equals C squared. If it's A squared plus B squared equals C squared, if they can't manipulate the equation, that would be a two point O. And so the conversation was a four point O would be really, there are some questions where you have a a room and I've gotta find the length from here to the base of that floor. That's a four point O question, because it takes, it's a lot more involved, but it's still Pythagorean theorem. So those are the conversations that they're at right now, because I feel like they're pretty strong already with understanding what a three point O is.
What grade was that?
That was eighth grade.
So as a parent though, to that same point now, we have two scales potentially, we use the two scales. I know that on the top part, the scales at three point O, that's targeted. So I know if I'm a three point O, my student is targeted. In the bottom two, um, is is a three, the target?
For my kid?
Right, but but I I would think consistently is everybody's target, right?
It should be.
So I'm just saying, so as a, so as a parent, I receive this, I look at this, do I know if 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 it's a two on the bottom scale? Are they not on target? Probably not, right?
I would think of it kind of like the S in the N, so S means.
Satisfactory.
Satisfactory and needs improvement or what, I don't know exactly what they call it now.
I'm saying, if I, if my student said a three or better, I know they're on target or they're doing better. On the bottom scale, if they get a three or a two, I don't know if, I necessarily know if they're on target, if they're where they should be. Well, just some feedback on the.
Yeah, no, I agree, and then both being numbers, right, like.
And different scales.
Yeah, different scales, but both numbers. Like if the, if the top was E's, M's and N's, and then the bottom was one, twos and threes, like it would, it would just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what my kid, my own daughter's report cards look like and it, yeah, it definitely differentiates easier.
Just in in alleviating some of the questions that might be generated once they're rolled out.
Yep.
I had a a question too on the same level. So you said that now you could have a kid who had, gets like a ninety-five in like say, like he got a ninety-five, okay, this term. So you're saying it could be assessments, it could be the DBAs, it can be, but their homework's thrown in there and maybe class participation. So say for instance, you have a student that gets, you know, all the points on class participation, all the points on DBAs and all the assessments. And these, this kid's like up there, they're like at that hundred mark. The most they could get is a three unless they really pushed it out of the park. And like, you know, you're gonna teach that stuff at that four level also, it's gonna get taught?
Yeah, I mean, once you get good at this, like, you have some, like, let's say you're teaching a standard. Ideally, you're differentiating in your lesson and some kids are practicing at the four point O level, cause.
And are they gonna know that they are, like?
Yeah, again, once you get good at it, yeah.
Four point O, get, if you want, if you want that, you gotta know how to do this and are you gonna give them those opportunities?
Yes, that's, but that's.
Not to make them sweat, but just say to challenge yourself, give them a challenge question in the bottom of the homework.
Absolutely, absolutely, like right now. I mean, I could be wrong, but like, we've gotten to the point where we've really pushed our math teachers, like, okay, you do the mini lesson. And now they go to do the learning activity. Like there should be like, hey, do the learning activity, probably in pairs or groups. And then, hey, you five come here and do it here, right? So like, that's good, because now we've got our like, need, you know, our. Vygotsky's EPD students, like they need me here with them to like get them up, right? And then everybody, but but if we get good at this, yes, I have this group that really needs me here. And then you guys over there, you you need to get, we call them at bats, like teach like a champion. You did get your at bats at the three point O level, but you two, you guys, you've gotten to get your at bats at the four point O level here and you hand it to them. That's not gonna happen overnight, that's not gonna happen overnight, but again, the the conversations drive us to that. One more thing for me to say to you, Ms. Trullio is, is, um. We do have a lot of time built in, so that's where we're lucky, like. She gets fifty minutes a week with her teachers. The department meeting is is monthly and then we have a collaboration station every Tuesday, which we wouldn't put all of them to this. Cause we do other, we do book study and art of teaching stuff. But the point is, we can have five or six hours a month of small group math. I don't even call it PD, cause it's generally just like collaborative learning, but. So if we didn't have that, if we had one department meeting a month, it'd be like, man, this is. Not only is this gonna be tough to get done, but if it gets away from us, it's gonna get way away from us. And the other thing we do at Burson is we cover each other and we do, we do release days as needed too with counterparts, so. Time wise, there is a lot of time to do this work with them. The other reason I probably don't wanna phase in is like, I I got especially one eighth grade math teacher like thrilled to do this. Like if I come, you know, like she would be arguing right now, no, let's get going, this is the way we should grade math. I have seventh grade math teachers that are phenomenal and that have sort of digested that, okay, we get it, we we do wanna do this, so. It's more just like a delay, I don't know, like I think, I think they're kind of ready.
There's two things there, we're talking about grading math versus teaching math. So if if we don't have instructional practices that are shifting, then if we change the grading system. Like to your point just now, like what you described in terms of, um, how do we? How do we ensure that these kids are getting their at bats? How do we ensure that these kids are having the time with the educator in small group after the mini lesson? And that the kids who need the four point O experiences are receiving them? That's a lot of planning for a teacher to take on. Cause I'm now, if I'm truly differentiating my instruction, going back to the standard, I have to deeply know that standard. I have to know that standard below, I have to know that standard above. I have to know what comes after this, possibly in ninth grade, what came before it in seventh grade. So when I'm talking about time, I mean, do we have time? Is that something that's viable across all three grade levels? And how do we ensure that that that's actually happening in in the classroom? So it's, it's great and I think, like I said it before, I think to shift. The mechanism by which our students are held accountable to is a great thing to do. Only if we can ensure that the instructional practices that they're being given access to are gonna help set them up for success at that point.
Yeah, so I think that's why I wanna do it, because I've spent six years and Charlene's been here. With me for two of them and Sheila Commissar before that, we've spent six years really deep diving the instructional practices. And math instruction at Burson has come a long way. I don't know if anybody remembers my first school committee meeting, it was like my only ever hard school committee meeting, it was the MCAS scores the year before I arrived and. It's come a long way, so as the principal, like I know we we kind of need our next thing that pushes us to that next level. Because the math instruction has come far. So I sort of see this as the next step towards the next level with the instructional practices. But it's a, yeah, I mean, I I hear you, so I'm not like.
No, 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 it's just, it's just conversation, I just.
Global question, why math? Why not English, science or social studies?
So. Honest answer, um. Well, the honest answer is, I mean, I'll be honest, like my leadership, I go in and out of departmental leadership. Okay, so I dive in with the department for a year or two on some big change work. And then I get out and and you and you incorporate that change work and I don't breathe down your neck. So last year, we went to amplify science, right? And that took a year to figure out what we were doing. And we went through the same process that we're talking about right now, are we gonna phase it in? Are we just gonna go in, you know, and that was great, great work. And now amplifies the one that people are saying is the best one, my department chose the best one, which is great. But now I kind of, I don't wanna say it that way, but I'm saying that I gotta kind of back off science, right? And like, um, and social studies went to history live two years ago. English, we have some work to do, uh, we have some work to do, but we also do score higher in English than we do in math. And math, we did a ton of work. They're, they're always doing a ton of work. Me diving in with this type of change can't happen every year or it falls on deaf ears. Matter of fact, it can't happen every other year or it falls on angry ears, uh, but if I if I time it right, it works, uh, they're open to it and. So it's just, it's kind of what I just said, which is just like, it's just time for our next step in math. We, we have those two things in place we talked about. We've, we, we, we've gone to Eureka, but we haven't married Eureka. Like we got teacher subscriptions, we got the materials, but we didn't get the like student everyday subscriptions. But it did what it needed to do, like it's, it's, it's made it so my sixth grade teachers teach tape diagrams and teach all these new ways of thinking that a few years ago we weren't, so we saw the instructional practice there change. It's also important to understand how we're gonna assess before we choose a new curriculum. So I know we just assume that we're gonna be able to and I know that it's way different at your level as will that curricular cycle continue? But like, um, I think this is the right way to grade math, the department agrees with me. And we're a year out from choosing a curriculum, so there's some value in like. Two years out, there's some value in, uh. Figuring this out before buying the wrong curriculum to go with this. And I will say, and I mean this, like. If, like, before I came here today, I went to sixth grade, I said, are you sure? Look how many standards you put on there, are you, like, what are you doing? Like, that's a lot of standards. And they're like, yeah, we're sure, and one of the sixth grade teachers was a coach in Framingham and she is like, she, she's been dying for me to do this, um, for years. She said, yeah, those are the, those are the standards we teach, those are the standards I assess, those are the standards I want parents to know about, you know? And I gave her one more chance, I said, you sure, you wanna take three off? She said, nope.
There's also about fifty standards in sixth grade.
Correct, yeah.
Seventeen on that report card.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So that's, so what I was, what I was getting at there is like, this'll change, right? So this isn't like, here's a report card, see me in four years, I'll tell you how it's going, like. We might find after the deep dive of a year that like, two of these don't both need to be in there and man, that one does. And then I'd be coming to you with a much quicker presentation saying, can we replace these standards with these? But that's how we do things at Burson for sure, like none of, this is to be set in stone for like five minutes, then we start to work on it and then I'd probably, it would probably end up changing here and there along the way.
I do believe to your point, it is huge. I do believe that that man sitting there right there, if he puts his mind to something, it will get done and it will get done well. I, I, it is huge, it is huge, I'm taking, and I'm, I see where you're coming and I understand it, but you need parent, like, you have to teach these.
Yeah, so my, the, the, the teachers, the teachers have been very concerned about that as well, so. I would, and I would take that on, that would be me, so. There would be a lot of communication, there would be probably an extra twenty minutes at the end of open house where I just say, anybody who who wants to understand their math report card, come down here and I'll talk to everybody at once. So I'd have to be pretty creative, um, for sure. And and then there'd just have to be a way for them to ask us questions along the way. And then we'd have to remember that people that are asking us questions are the ones that care, this is a good thing, right? Like it's, silence is not always a good thing, like this is a good thing that you're asking us, so.
So have they start, they've already started creating some of the September, like. Thoughts of like how they're gonna introduce this to the kids, like, I'm assuming you're gonna have to have new assessments and what you're doing. But have you started with like those in that order or you're just kind of globally thinking about?
Or are you just kinda globally thinking about?
We actually, I met with Wendy Lee, who is the department head today, um, because we're trying to look at the I-ready part of it, and that's something I just need to check in with you after too. Um, because they do have those standards-based assessments already there, and we want to look at, at those also. But our plan is to meet with the teachers and then um, take some of our time to start creating some of those assessments for them while we're working on other things with their input, which is how we've done the DBAs, how we've done everything, is get their input and then start putting them together.
And we definitely gave them checkpoints, so when we got to this point, they took a deep breath. Like, cause then it was like, okay, now it's on me. Now I gotta go to school, Minnie Connor's gotta go to Reddicker and make sure Reddicker can do this, and assuming they can, but like. Um, so there's a little bit of, you know, MCAS start tomorrow, and.
Now, if you felt like you hit a wall, like, you, you're getting there, and you're like, what, can we get them? Well, we need it to be successful if we're gonna do this. And obviously, we don't wanna spend any more money than we have to. But if they need to have people to come in to help, yes?
No, after you're finished, I'll help you.
You know, how do we, are, are, we're gonna help them?
Yes, we can help them.
I wasn't asking, I was kinda saying.
Yep, yeah, yep.
Just to make sure we are clear that I wasn't asking.
If, if that's the way we go, we would be all in.
Definitely, if we need to get another coaching temporarily, or somebody else that, okay.
Well, I don't know about another FTE, but we can certainly.
No, 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 we're talking about like a consultant or professional development, or whatever it is, okay.
Yeah, and, and going back to that first slide, like, a lot of it is just getting my teachers to time, right? So like, I'd have to be open to more release days, but I'm happy to be open to release days if like, they're sitting around talking about standards, like, that's. They're not just like trying to plan next week and just try, you know, which is noble work, but like, it, all of this should come back to standards. And it's the next step for my math department is a real standards focus. So I should say, this didn't come out of, we need new report cards. This came out of, we gotta get more in tune with the standards minute to minute and day to day. And so how do we do that? Well, one way is standards-based grading keeps you focused. Then you start reading, like, whoa, this is pretty cool, this could work. And then you start talking to people that have done it, and it's all about focusing on those standards. And we will not get this perfectly the first year, but we'll get it pretty good. Uh, and I think, I think we'll do it in a way that only motivates the teachers to get it better and better and doesn't frustrate them to just go, whatever, the kid's a three point O, I, I can't, I don't know. You know what I mean? That would be my goal for us.
I feel like the better they get at, at the teaching part of it, the better they're gonna get at the grading part of it also. But it will make it much easier to, to grade somebody if they're really doing what has to happen to be.
And I was gonna speak to that, but the opposite, and the whole idea of the district's really trying to support more formative frequent assessments as opposed to longer cumulative assessments we've had, because by the time it gets, we get there, it's really hard to go back. But if we know right away that Bobby's struggling with that, then it really helps to motivate and push and, and get us in the direction of differentiating in the moment as opposed to, you know, a few months later. Um, so we're, as a district, we're, we're doing a lot of things with PD and just tools to help the teachers with that, so that fits right into what I can.
Yeah, just from a student perspective, beyond the logistics of this effort, I'm very impressed with the direction that this conversation is taking in progressing education. I think it's a very valuable discussion.
Thanks, Mike.
And I really appreciate the work you've done, and hopefully we'll continue to do it, so thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
It would mean all new DBAs then for next year?
To be honest with you, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this here, but it would, it would mean all new DBAs or no DBAs. You, you do so many formatives that are, that are common.
Different than what's going on now.
Yeah.
More frequent, common assessments.
More frequent, common assessments that are shorter.
Some of the um, software that they've been throwing out, we're piloting now, is we're looking at how do we get this information in the hands of teachers faster and in a way that's making sense to the teachers? Uh, and we thought we had accomplished some things three years ago when we were doing it with Mastery Connect, but it's not, it, it, it didn't hit the goal that we truly had outlined at that time. And so now we're, there's a lot more piloting going on. Uh, I-ready's part of it, uh, you heard Dr. Allen mentioned STAR, we've been using that for a while. Maybe that's not something that we continue in this mode with, when we use that for more of a diagnostic.
Yeah, and even like I told you about the tutoring, right? Like, when I said to teachers, grab eight or ten kids that aren't tiered, but that could use a little bit more, right? Like, no fault of their own, like, it's just a pretty subjective choice, right? Like, they're just like, ah, I think Heather's been struggling a little bit, and Jake, you know, and Rich, come on, you always are fun to be with, you know, uh, and could use some more math, like, um. If you have this, and I say that, I say, hey, get all your two point Os on properties of exponents, and let's do a half hour tutorial tomorrow, right? Like.
But if your instructional practices have already shifted, wouldn't that already be a conversation that could happen? I think that's where I'm feeling this tension is. If we're at.
Good point, good point.
It's not the mechanism that's gonna drive you to have those conversations. It's the understanding of the standards and the instructional practices. You can be doing all of this, everything you've described, absent of changing the report card.
Yeah.
And that's really what you want. And that's what I hear that passion for is, is we want to fundamentally change what math instruction looks like at Burchland Park.
We want to continually to fundamental change, because we've done a lot of work.
I'm not arguing that point.
To fundamentally change it a lot, yeah.
But.
Is it chicken or the egg, though? Is it, is it, this is a necessity to get to that point of self-assessment on an educator's level?
Well, it depends.
It moves another part of the group. I think the discussion's been happening, but it makes it, to the point I think you made earlier in the presentation, this makes it possibly more real and more of an incentive to take it from theory and now put it into practice.
Yeah, so for some teachers, this is how they're teaching, and it's gonna be a new way to grade, but it's not gonna be a new way to teach. For others, um, they've taken steps towards teaching this way, but they haven't gotten all the way there, and this'll, this'll be a, a good, like, next step in helping them get all the way there. Um, I think that's the right way to answer it. My funny example of bringing Rich to tutoring was a bit extreme.
He's a funny guy, Heather.
He is funny.
Good to have him part of it.
But that's a good point, I mean, I know what you mean, but um.
And by varying levels of PD, so you might have some who are in a different place than others. And that's okay, that's, that's okay.
But we couldn't do this if I didn't have the department that I could describe on that first slide.
Yep.
Right? Because if I didn't have intrinsically motivated people, then a change like this would just get met with like. Um, and I, man, I was honest with them. I mean, I would have not brought this forward if the department didn't want it brought forward, because what's the point? What's the point of having a department do this that doesn't wanna do it? It would fall on its face. Um, so I was, but I was happy when they were in, which was good.
So in the end, is it, is it fair to say that it's all relative in terms of a four point O on this scale versus a score on MCAS versus a STAR assessment score? In the end, should they all be relative so that we can see some continuity on how students are performing on all of them?
That's the goal.
Okay.
I mean, one of the things we did in this process was we ran STAR correlations um, from last year's percentile ranks to last year's MCAS scores, because I did that to show the department, to be honest with you, I thought the correlation was gonna be low. It's not the most scientific thing we ever did, but we ran it in two grades with Mindy Spencer, and it was point eight nine and point eight seven, their STAR percentile rank to their MCAS score. So that was like, cause I told you, I presented the tutoring, the standards-based grading. The other thing I presented was, do we, do we try something other than STAR? But we didn't go down that route when we saw the correlation. We still are not getting much out of STAR, but at least a kid that does well at STAR, percentile rank-wise, is doing well at MCAS.
The interesting is the scaled STAR.
Thank, I don't accuse you, huh? Ms. LaChapelle hasn't said that enough. I'm like, I'm running any more numbers.
But I do think, just, I don't mean to harp on this, but that focus, standards-based assessment and form, I'm sorry, standards-based grading and formative assessment, that shift to knowing right away that somebody's struggling with it in, in a more, less objective way, so that I, as a teacher, the expectations, I need to do something about this, as opposed to three months later, I think is really gonna shift the instruction.
Right, and so if only seventeen of the standards are on the actual report, we're still not to assume that all the rest of the fifty aren't being addressed?
Correct, so when you choose power standards, it's like, it's like if you choose the sun, you get Mercury, Venus, and Earth, because you took the sun with you, so Mercury, Venus, and Earth come with you. So when you choose power standards, a lot of the standards, although they're separate, are also intertwined. Like, if I teach a kid area of a circle, then they've also learned diameter, right? So diameter is its own standard, but area incorporates it. So when done well, choosing power slash priority standards brings those other standards along. And that's exactly the work we did with DBAs. When we created DBAs, we weren't assessing fifty standards. We picked the priority standards, assessed them, and if we did it well. Now, we might find that one of our priority standards doesn't bring the other ones along, and that's where we'd be like, oh, you know, we gotta get, we gotta put that in here, or whatever. Uh, but that's, that's why I say there's a lot of gray. As black and white as this proposal is, it comes with a lot of gray. But Burchland is great at gray. Like, we're not, it's not like, Tim, you said this once. They know when I say it once, it's pretty meaningless, uh, so.
And they also understand that they're still teaching all of the standards. These are just the ones that are going to be reported on them. And a lot of them, when they talked about it, we looked at MCAS as a reference for what the percentages were. We also looked at a lot of other schools and what they had chosen and why, and we read some articles, and we looked at things that would carry over and really support from year to year is the way we looked at it. But there is a clear understanding that that doesn't mean this is all you're teaching, that you're teaching all of the standards.
Right.
Um, but these are the main ones that are gonna be reported on.
So upon approval and implementation, is it, can we assume that we'll have some sort of update in a year?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Change some of the, how it looks in the end, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, I think that's a good segue, Mr. Thompson, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to move that we approve the Burchland Park proposal for standards-based grading for math for the 2019, 2020 school year.
I'd motion, I have a second.
Second.
I get any further discussion?
Just if they need help, we need to give them it. They hit a wall, they need to, no FTS.
Dr. Allen's not afraid to ask for it.
Yeah.
All right.
Follows the favor, please say yes.
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 Posed?
Posed, no.
Passes four to win.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Do you wanna make fun of me for two minutes? What do you got?
Oh, wait, oh, no, that wasn't good, Joe.
It's two minutes, I promise. MCAS season, Mr. Martin. It's my favorite time of the year, Mr. Allen. I don't know if I'd call it favorite, but I know we're ready. I'm ready, you're ready. Do you think the kids at Burchland Park Middle School are ready? I know the kids at Burchland Park Middle School are ready. I messed these parts. Five second pause, my fault. Are you ready? I'm all ready. If you're hearing this message, it's 'cause the next two days, the MCAS test is coming your way. So get good sleep, and be here on time. Eat a good breakfast, so crown your mind. You are ready, there's no doubt about that. You've worked so hard, I'm telling you, that's a fact. So don't be nervous, you're ready to go. Take your time on the test, it's okay to go slow. Reread your answers, just like in school. Don't fall for their traps, 'cause your brain's far too cool. And most of all, persevere when it's tough. Don't get frustrated, just don't give up. The MCAS test, tomorrow it's here. And at Burchland Park, we have no fear. It's the MCAS test, MCAS test, MCAS test, it's the MCAS test. Yeah, so if you don't have a seventh grader, you don't have to worry about that tonight.
Yeah.
That girl was good, huh?
Yeah.
Like, I pulled her out of last block, was like, I need you to just play a riff over and over again. She didn't flinch, she didn't flinch. All right, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaChapelle.
I wanna say, Tim, my daughter's had three absolutely phenomenal middle school years. And I wanna say thank you, because that's kind of, that's.
It's a hard school.
That's a big compliment.
She's got two separate friends, she just, it's amazing. And yeah, the atmosphere is great.
Keep the songs coming.
I don't know about that.
Well, I was gonna say something about, don't put your day job, something like that.
Better not.
So moving way along, five point one point two is updated curriculum renewal schedule.
Okay, so we have Mrs. Brown here. Um, at your places, we had a revised um, curriculum renewal schedule, adding in one um, content area that was missed as we put it into the packets.
Which one is that?
Uh, Family, Consumer, Science, and Health. Six twelve FCS Health.
They're twenty twenty one.
Yep.
Um, so what happened with this is that um, a lot of the folks that were up for renewal this year, so the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty folks would be looking at different curriculum, vetting it. There's actually a whole process, it's just on the back here, um, where we look at, um, you know, is there something going on with our scope and sequence? Should we go do a scope and sequence review? And if our scope and sequence is looking good, but the, you know, whatever we're using in terms of resources are not meeting the needs, then that's when we go into a purchasing recommendation. And so there's a whole process for, oh, thank you, um, vetting those. Sometimes there's pilots, things like that, so that we really kind of get an idea of, of what's out there. And then the thing that Massachusetts is uh, going to release this uh, summer is called Curate, which is a, it's facilitated through DESI, and it takes in um, surveys and other basically direct uh, information from schools and teachers about the curriculum that they're using, and, and there's a ranking, they came up with rubrics, and so that's gonna be really great information for us going forward. Um, so that's how the process works. And so if you look here for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, um, Social Studies and History have a whole new curriculum that um, is in, was in draft form until recently. There's a new civics project requirement at eighth grade and in the high school, so there's a lot of new um, things going on in that, in that, in that department. So um, when we talked to them about renewal, they wanted more time because they're still getting their heads around the standards. In fact, DESI until, until recently, was still getting their heads around the standards. So it didn't make sense to really go into a new curriculum until we figured out what those standards were. Um, and I'm gonna jump down to, uh, Family, Consumer Sciences and Health has had a huge shift in uh, human resources there, a lot of new personnel, so they really weren't in the space to look at what they needed because they were just figuring out what they were as a department at that point.
And then. We'll have a new department chair next year as well.
Next year, yes. Um, and then the word study and the phonics at the K to two level, uh, they knew that they needed something to help them with this. They had been using words their way, um, with different levels of fidelity, and um, it really wasn't doing what they needed to do. Um, the school uses units of study in reading and writing, and so they are looking at, for, one of the things that they're really interested in is the unit of study of phonics um, from um, Lucy Cawkins. Um, but they know that there's other things out there as well. So we've been looking at different things, and so um, the whole school's not ready to take this on yet, but I, um, the kindergarten has uh, really invested in all of the units of study with Lucy Cawkins and wants to pilot uh, the phonics program next year. So um, that's something to think about when I get back to uh, two thousand nineteen. And then, as Mr. Allen said, uh, six to eight math is kind of shifting, and they are also looking not just for a new curriculum, because as we talked about, it's really more about the standards and the instruction, but uh, assessments so that they're, the teachers aren't spending a whole lot of time creating assessments. If there's assessments that are vetted that um, kind of connect to that system that he was talking about. So the idea would be then, since um, none of these uh, departments need anything right away for those reasons, um, to use the majority of the money for uh, the curriculum renewal money for this one-to-one initiative. Um, because in, in reality, a lot of the curriculum that we're using, more and more of it is online. So we might have access, like, for he mentioned, Mr. Allen mentioned History Alive, but at the, at the moment, there aren't enough computers for every social studies teacher to have a, a, a student at a computer using the online, so they had to buy books. So in reality, if we had more money in um, towards the one-to-one initiative, So in reality, if we had more money in, towards the one to one initiative, we could actually access more of the curriculum that we've already purchased.
You actually give a boost almost to all curricular areas?
Yes.
With, with that. But just a reminder, as you're looking at this schedule, so really, I'll just use twenty twenty and twenty twenty one as an example. So those four areas, if you go back to the flow chart, basically what we're saying is next year becomes their year one. That's their study year.
Right.
And last year, basically, when we had come to the school committee to give you this schedule, in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year, you had social studies and you had family, consumer, science and health. And I believe we had ELA as well. And what we're recognizing is they've been working at this year one, but they need more time. And so that's, that's the idea of maybe bumping them down. Don't have them lose their opportunity in the whole cycle. But maybe at this point, what you use the July one renewal line item is a way to boost all areas with finishing off the one to one initiative with the capital providing the other funding.
So by, oh, I agree. Also, if I was reading this correctly, then in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, grades nine to twelve math would be in year one?
Can you say the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Grades nine to twelve math.
So last year they purchased.
So they purchased July one of this year.
They purchased July one of this year.
Yes.
But the year, so they're now in year two. So year one was the vetting process, that phase one, phase one, year one. All three.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, you're right, that's a great question, cause it's confusing as you look at this.
But one thing just to, to notice, from a big picture perspective, is thinking about the shift with MCAS at the high school level.
Yes.
And just looking at how far out something like math would be.
Right.
And now we're gonna have very different reporting measures to help, when I look at the back and the flow chart, especially to the right, like student achievement. So if we're starting to see a trend, hopefully knock on wood not, with our student achievement data based on the MCAS two point O hitting the high school for the first time this year.
You may have to revamp the schedule again.
Especially with high school grades.
Yes.
Like seeing ELA not until twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, like going up through twelfth grade, science is down there as well. Math would probably be coming back around that time, just wanting to make sure like that.
Yeah, no, that's a great point.
Flexibility there.
And over time, since this cycle has been in place, we have done that.
Okay.
At least twice. We've shown, yeah. This isn't by no means set in stone, whatever the needs are. I mean, the, the reason we, granted, we have done that, but we do try to give all our departments an idea of when they're going to be up.
Absolutely. You don't wanna be shifting curricula on educators, cause then you get no continuity in practices, you get no continuity in, in their understanding of what program they're supposed to be using. But just when I first looked at that, knowing that we don't really know what's to come this year in terms of accountability.
And there is a little bit of anxiety around that.
What's our line item on this year's?
A hundred thousand?
It's a hundred thousand.
Hundred? And we're asking for how much?
Fifty thousand.
Another fifty? So in this whole proposal for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, is that, are we thinking it's going to be a hundred and fifty? Are we planning on?
No, right now, we're still, we're, we're looking at it as though it's a hundred thousand.
And the same with the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one? Or can we accomplish all four things?
Yes.
In twenty twenty, in twenty twenty one, a hundred and fifty thousand would really help us get to the four areas, yeah.
However, if you notice, you know, the, the one that's really big is the six to eight math. The K to two ELA is really just the phonics piece, because they have reading and writing materials right now that are, are used. The health department and family, consumer sciences are fairly small. And then the reason why it says eighth in high school civics slash U S history is because two years ago, so the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, they purchased world history materials at the high school. So it would be a little bit less than like the entire high school social studies.
Right. And we have a request for a capital for technology.
So technology had requested actually the full amount for the one to one, which was around three hundred and five thousand dollars.
Through I T?
Through I T.
Right.
With support of us.
Yeah, we're in there.
Correct.
And so that's still the request?
No, the recommendation has been made now, it sits in the town council's recommended budget for capital at two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, so five thousand less.
Yep.
Okay. And this would be the difference?
This would bring about a hundred thousand to that, or more.
Bring it to where?
So upon approval of this, I say that we make that a point at our budget discussion with the council, that we are meeting the rest of the expectation, even though it was originally our quest, part of our understanding of.
Being fiscally responsible.
Is we're gonna shift some budget money to fulfill that request because we think it's that important.
Right.
And we're able to do that based on the needs for curriculum renewal as well.
Sure.
Right, am I getting that all right?
You are.
Going forward though, we were still requesting a hundred and fifty, because that's what will get us the four areas that we're looking at for twenty twenty, twenty one. Okay. We're all on the same page.
Has this been communicated to the other department heads? I mean, are they gonna be shocked when they hear that they're pushed down a year?
In terms of beyond two, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one? So a lot of times people are not necessarily that aware of what's going on in this anyway. So K to five math, they have Eureka, so that will be a whole other conversation. And then I put six to eight am, uh, science on here, just with a footnote, because it's less than the five years, but their subscription runs out. So they, I don't know if they're gonna need our support or not.
Is that amplifiers up there?
That's their science curriculum, which also they can't access on the computers at this point if other members of their team need to use the laptops. So that's another one that. So short story is that most folks aren't even aware of this right now. And when, when we, we did some of this, we were kind of thinking about those needs in terms of new standards and things that were going on. But it is a flexible schedule, so, but yeah, no one's.
So K through two will pilot program with kindergarten?
Kindergarten is pretty much all on board to pilot. What we would also hope is that as we discuss it throughout the remainder of this year, is that we'll pick up a few pilators in first and second, so that we can build interest and hopefully fidelity in terms of the use of this phonics program, which integrates well with both our curriculum in writing and in read.
How comfortable are we with a hundred and fifty? If we go to a hundred and fifty on the curriculum renewal, in terms of subscription renewals, once we go to one to one? So I think it's along the general discussion that we have with the council. We're gonna prolong or forego some of our curriculum renewal for one year to get to this initiative of the one to one. So that means we need the boost of the one fifty to get us back on track, because it's very, it's important that the work that we're doing. But we need to also guarantee that if we go to the one fifty, that we're gonna be able to meet the subscription requirements for a couple of years at least.
Licenseur requirements.
Licenseur, so how comfortable are we with that?
That's why I put a footnote, cause I didn't know.
For the elite, for the amplifier specifically?
Right, that some of these, a lot, you know, sometimes you can get six years, sometimes, but sometimes, you know, in this case, it was a three year subscription, so.
For the six to eight science?
Correct.
So we might shop that again in two years to get something different? But I guess.
I think it's having success right now. What, what we would have to do is look at how we're providing the funding to make sure that we renew those licenses.
I guess my question is, if we go to the council, as we talk to them, as we all work together to get to a budget, can we say to them, if we get to this one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for curriculum renewal, we foresee that being sufficient funding for X years? Is that five years, can we say that?
I don't know if we would wanna say.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna go up five years, but I.
To go up fifty percent, I think is a substantial increase. So I think to say, to go for three, four, five years is not unrealistic. I'm just trying to say that because we're pulling, we're pushing everything off a year, we need that extra juice to get us back on track. But we're also not gonna come back to you next year and say we need two fifty.
That would be accurate.
I will not be coming back.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's how you're worth it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what we would have to do, what we do anyway, to, to the point you're making, is as we evaluate not only what may be needed and what will be requested, we look at, star has been brought up. We look at how many licenses are we funding each year? And if we can reduce that in order to allow something like the iReady pilot, we do. So those aren't even requests that may get to the.
Maximize the licensure.
Correct. So, so we would, we would do the same thing. The other piece that principals know is, Mrs. Brown's being really nice here in terms of putting it back on curriculum renewal, because departments have their own sort of renewal money, if you will. And so they can make some hard decisions too, in terms of licensure.
They just want their annual budget?
The building base budget starts to break out the supply money to the departments.
Well, that goes towards licensures as well?
It can.
It can.
It has not consistently gone to licensure. But then you have to make a decision, such as some departments choose to, you know, as textbooks break down, if they're staying with that edition, they just use that to buy more textbooks replacement, I guess would be the best way to say it. But if they, if they wanna break out of that completely, because we're one to one, now's the opportunity.
Right.
I guess I was also thinking that sometimes when you get multiple years licenses, you get a discount.
True.
But you can't always pay for all that with building base. So I'm, I'm just kind of thinking then, future.
Yeah, so wherever it's gonna come out of, I'm just at, you know, are we gonna be covered for within the hundred and fifty for the next couple of years? So we can say that to them, because it is a substantial increase.
That's fine.
I wasn't putting.
I think we're all the same.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
And just a reminder, that is the final amount in our budget request, so that brings it to that final three point four six percent.
Right.
This is a reminder.
Yeah.
I would like to ask.
I think it's just gonna come up specifically in the discussion with them. So whatever you would bring to that.
I think you're, you're correct. It, it finalizes the one to one. We have support across the district for the one to one. It gives a boost to really all curriculum. And then we would have to start to really continue our professional development to say, how do you utilize, when you have a one to one program, how do you utilize this to the best advantage of your class?
Right.
And even though it's not necessarily part of the, the curriculum purchasing, just so you know, that is a big part of what we're thinking about too, in terms of professional development. And even with the, the K to two phonics, to come back and bring more professional development for the reading and writing units of study, just to make sure that we're on the same page and using it with fidelity. And that said, I did wanna ask if we could purchase with the curriculum renewal, some of the kits for the kindergarten who want to pilot next year? Cause they, they normally would be up for purchasing the following year, and, but they're inter, they're just, they're, they're really gung ho about.
Is there a cost on that?
That'd be about thirty five hundred.
How come the, that's not like free? Why are the publishers not, or opt for it for a pilot?
Some allow you to have it for thirty days and then, but you know, because we're such a small district, they're not usually. I mean, I've been negotiating with different groups that, you know, will allow us. But I think Lucy Cockens is just a household name, that she's not one that, you know, you either want or you don't.
Is this even in our purview? I mean, I, we're just, I, we're talking about a very specific thing here, and now we're talking about funding something out of.
What operating budget would that be? Is that this, this year's operating budget or next year's?
It'll be next year's. We're talking about the thirty five hundred, we're talking next year.
So we're talking in terms of our budget for next year?
Right.
That's what.
Part of the curriculum renewal, only the thirty five hundred would go to funding.
Out of curriculum renewal?
Right.
Right. But I don't think that's, I agree with Rich. That can happen next year, if that's what we decide to do. That's, that, yeah.
That's separate from us.
It is. Today.
Just do it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Well, what we need from, from you is.
We're just, we're gonna vote on the curriculum renewal.
Correct. That's why we're gonna do it.
The schedule.
Yeah, now the issue is separate.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Nice, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion, please?
Move to approve the updated curriculum renewal schedule as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Anybody opposed? Beautiful, nice work.
Just a question on the, how, how much of curriculum renewal is actually physically textbooks? And how much is online virtual?
It's becoming more and more online. And, and, and really, it's, it's going, like we were talking about the chicken and an egg before, you know? As we get more computers, people will be more likely to use the online. And it gives kids access to lots of other opportunities at home and.
But you made a couple of really valid points. Even as we went that direction, because we have not, we don't have enough machines at the middle school and high school, they still had to fall back and buy some textbooks.
Right.
So, so the hope is next year we get out of that.
Yeah.
And the nice thing about online subscriptions too, is that the curriculum can constantly change, so you're not using a geography textbook from ten years ago.
Right.
You know, it's some, a country name changes, they can update it right away.
Yeah. Cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And after all, is the exciting part of the school committee meeting, we have our assistant superintendent for business. And what do we have today?
So in your packet is a request from Maple Shade principal, Michael Ferdepp, to have you approve a three hundred dollar check from the American Heart Association, which is just part of a give back for their appreciation for the nineteen, what's it saying, appreciation of nineteen twenty campaign, for next year.
I think it was eighteen nineteen.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to say eighteen nineteen. I'm sorry, as I'm reading that.
Move to accept the three hundred dollar gift donation from American Heart Association to Maple Shade School.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second?
Although, I have a discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you. We're skipping down to new business Rotary Club Foundation, request for ELHS grounds for independent state fireworks from June twenty eighth to July third, twenty nineteen.
I think we've done this in the past.
We have done this in the past, last few years, the Rotary Club has been putting together the fireworks show. And the June twenty eighth is to allow us to set up the ground. So we put the snow fencing in and also make sure that the fire inspector is checking out how we've set that up so that they can safely shoot off the fireworks.
Okay, motion please.
Move to approve the Rotary Club Foundation request for use of ELHS grounds for independent state fireworks displayed from Friday, January twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, through July third, twenty nineteen.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion? Imagine if you would vote this down. No. Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? In seven point two, same Rotary Club sponsorship banner on the fencing around the tennis courts. It is temporary from July third to July fifth.
So this is a request that they've put in the last two years, I believe. It, they're, cause we do have a policy around advertising, these, these will be temporary advertising of sponsors. The, when the Rotary Club agreed a few years ago to pick this up from, I believe, the J C's who used to do it, they then, in order to make this happen, sought out community sponsors. And they like to recognize those sponsors with a few banners during the festivities, pretty much from July third through the fifth. They take them down on the fifth.
Motion please.
Move to approve the Rotary Club, Rotary Club Foundation request to affix sponsorship banners on the fencing around the tennis courts and exterior fence of the turf field from July third through the fifth.
Motion made, second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody against, or you're gonna have us there? Once again, we always love to have Mr. Jake Brady here, and of course, our, Mr. Don Mackey. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
We have adjourned. Excellent meeting.